Sorry about that. Mr. Madden, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody who might pray with me, please do so at this time. Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here again. We've been doing this pretty frequently and we consider it an absolute gift to be able to serve our friends, our neighbors, and our families. Hopefully, we glorify you in the process, Lord. Help us with open hearts and open minds and open ears tonight as we do the business of this city. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Everybody, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, and to the full of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. That the records also reflect that attending tonight is our City Administrator, Mr. Madden, our City Clerk, Ms. Miller, along with various department heads, Mr. Dearhoff and Chief Miller. Appreciate y'all being here tonight also. Anyone via electronic methodology? Okay, I don't have anyone on there. So at that point, the next item on our agenda would be potential motions for executive sessions on contractual matters as well as another one on economic development. Would someone like to handle?
Mayor, move that we enter executive session, consider contractual matter related to the Fire Department under Section 30-4-70A2 and an economic development matter under Section 30-4-70A5.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second, Mr. Crayling. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we will enter into the executive session at this time by an affirmative vote of four oh approximately 5:35. So we will reconvene upstairs in the conference room. Thank you. I'll call back to order the special call council meet. Well, not yet. Yes, I will. Call it back to order at approximately 6:10 PM. Let the records reflect that Ms. King joined us during our executive session. She is with us this evening also now. Would someone like to report out? Mr. Madden?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at 6:10, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. Next item on agenda is public comment. Is there anyone? Affirm? Is in attendance, anyone on remotely? We don't see anyone. All right, council request. Hearing none, what's council's wish on adjournment?
Adjourned.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Kuzner? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we stand adjourned at about 6:15-ish. All right, next item, guys, is Recreation Committee meeting.
Mayor, Recreation does not have a quorum tonight. Chairman, neither the chairman nor Mr. Reynolds are here.
Okay, next one will be Public Works then.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting for August the 2nd. It is 6:14 PM. I have with me Ms. King and, oh, Ms. Reynolds is not here today, so it's just the two of us today. Also, we have Mr. Fleeman as well. Let's see here, all right. The, okay, any public comment? Not on that. What do I hear about reading and approvals of minutes?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second that. Those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Eyes have it. I apologize, there was no discussion, correct?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Just turn it up. It's the switch. Are you sure? Oh, okay. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. So as far as Public Works goes, I'll give you an update at the new facility. We have a lot of action going on. The new security system was, they began its installation today, should be finished tomorrow. Roofers began today. They're going to be held off a little bit by the rain yesterday, but there's going to be a new roof going on the two-story building. We worked diligently to complete the task within the timeframe provided. We were out of McDougal end of the day Friday, one day short of 30 days. We worked over the weekend. We ran all internet throughout the whole facilities. We put down floors. We changed our toilets. We painted the walls. We're about a week away from, you know, showing it off. So it's moving right along. Outside of that, we really haven't spent any money other than we have authorized purchase orders for the turf at Field One on City, and they should be here this week. Turf goes down, keep that field closed for a few weeks, and we'll have another phenomenal baseball field here in the City of Malden. Any problems you've run into with the building over here, anything unexpected, major unexpected? I know there's going to be some things. All of the phone lines, the internet lines were bad. A lot of the electrical was older and deemed unsafe, so we've had to rerun electrical lines, installed new phone lines and internet. But we've been able to do that work in-house and save a great deal of money. Good. So everyone excited and happy? Mostly. Understood. All right, excellent. Any questions? Thank you. Anything from Matt? Mr. Fleeman, anything? Okay. We go on to the next here. Any, there's no unfinished business? And then now we're back to Mr. Fleeman again? Sure. GIS services. Yeah, the City of Malden has historically contracted our GIS service. It's primarily used for the sewer division for, you know, the streets, right-of-way's, sewer lines, manholes, BDS shares, you know, access to that information. Historically-
Excuse me, Mr. Fleeman, can we maybe? Pause, the streaming's not working and, because I know we have people online.
Thank you. No problem.
You're talking for my sake, but I have to repeat.
This one's really short and sweet, don't worry.
Mr. Chair, you want to take a five-minute recess?
Yeah. What's the procedure, that just make a motion, a second? Or we just call for a five-minute recess?
I think we're. Do we know where Brandon is? No? Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess and to return at approximately 6:25?
I'll second that. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Discussion? So moved. Since we've now come back from our technical issue, the hearing will now continue where we were. We were at this point discussing GIS services, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Fleeman. All right, historically, we have used Two Springs as our contract GIS service provider. It's primarily for the sewer division, map sewer lines, manholes, property lines, et cetera, et cetera. BDS uses the information as well to produce city maps. In May of 2020, a larger corporation, Avneon, Avneon, they purchased Two Springs, absorbed the company. We've continued to use their services, but Avneon expressed interest in having the contract switched over in their name because the contract was still in Two Springs' name. So what we're requesting is for, consider an action of assignment of contract to change the name of the contract for GIS services from Two Springs to Avneon. No Ts and Cs changes in terms of conditions? No. It's the exact same contract, it's just a name change. And this, of course, is going to be reviewed by, does that have to be reviewed by legal? Yeah, absolutely. We have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to forward to full council for consideration and action on the assignment of contract with Avneon for the continued GIS services for the city.
I'll second that. I would like to point out, just because it does matter to us, is that the employees who were working for Two Springs, who always provided us services, have been absorbed and actually are still working for this company. So we're still dealing with the same thing. So this basis, no difference but the name on the check, correct? That is correct. No change, it's not going to cost us anything, it's just formal paperwork. All right, any discussion? All right, that. All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, eyes have it. All right, we move to the next public comment. Any public comment? Mr. Madden, anyone?
No one is indicating that they would like to speak.
Committee concerns.
Mr. Chair, I do have, not necessarily a concern, but a follow-up question to our last committee meeting. There was conversation about a signal being placed at Murray Drive and Devon Drive, and Mr. Reynolds had requested that you get input from the rest of the council members. Has that been done yet?
Yes, actually, there was a majority of council that were in support of moving forward with a conceptual drawing of the intersection with the signal along with the traffic study. Those staff has obtained at least one quote or the pricing for that. We'll obtain two others. If it needs to come back to council because of the cost, then we can bring it back to council through committee to vet that. But I'll provide an update as I get additional quotes.
Thank you.
Any other thing else? One thing, just a note, and not sure if this would be, I believe it would be to your folks. Lights for the playground over here that we had installed Friday night, I think they were missing a key and couldn't turn them on. I do compliment to her, was there turning on every other light they could for that, but I'm sure it was just oversight, just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Yes, I was phoned. I instructed the employee which key it was, and then the lights were switched on. Okay, okay. I know at first they were turning every light they could on, but that one, because they didn't have a key, I think. They were trying, they were doing their best. We got it resolved, and I apologize. New key, understood. Thank you. All right, what do I hear for adjournment?
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Calling EPD to order 6:26 PM on August 2nd. Everybody's here, committee members and staff. First public comment? Do we have public to comment? Madden, we have anybody online that would like to provide comment?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. So we will move on to the reading and approval of minutes. What do I hear?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Crayling and a second from Ms. Kuzner. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the minutes are approved as presented. Reports communications from City Officer, Mr. Broad.
Community development's off and running for our new year, no significant budget items to discuss. I do want to point out that so far, and these numbers will adjust a little bit as late bills come in, we came in about 11% under budget in our last budget cycle, which is something pretty significant for us. We had a great summer this year with Beaching Fridays over 800 in attendance per night. Several Fridays saw about 1,200, 1,500, according to some of the estimators that do that estimating for us. The farmers markets had a good attendance this summer. We gained a new sponsorship with Ryan Homes. Our lobby renovation plans are underway. Some progress has already been made on the window repairs. You've seen, I've taken some pictures of that. We're excited about getting that going. Don Dees opened our cabin, his Pop Creamery Cabin, this past June. He's had good community reception. And we have multiple projects of development continuing to move forward, obviously City Center, Bridgeway Station, Aldi. And there are a lot of other projects in the works, obviously many that we can't talk about, but I think it is exciting time.
Questions for Mr. Broad? Ms. Kuzner?
Mr. Broad, I just have one question about the farmer's market.
Yes, ma'am.
So if there is threat of rain, sometimes they don't have the market. Is there a way to move that indoors?
Possibly, you know, we could move that indoors in the auditorium, take all the seating out and move that in there. Very possibly. I've told our staff, we're going to hold the market rain or shine. We're supposed to hold it rain or shine. Because a lot of times, you know, it'll look like it's going to rain all day. You get around to 5:00 and all of a sudden, it's nice. And of course, that's very frustrating for our vendors and for our patrons who are looking for the market. So it's ongoing conversation with our staff that we make sure we keep the market going. And not just on Tuesdays, but we're discussing continually the larger market in itself, how we can improve it, what we need to do to make it better. So I'll mention that in our staff too as well. Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Broad? Van, your team did a fantastic job with Beaching Fridays, and we can't thank them enough. The one comment that I did hear is that we need more programming out there after Beaching Fridays is over. So just kind of noodle that in your head. Also, while we're talking about beaching, let's talk about beaching Christmas. Where are we on beaching Christmas?
I think we're still waiting on the electrical. Do we know where we are on that?
Yes, we have Excel Electric, they're going to perform the improvements. I'll give an update and admin report on the timeline.
Well, I mean, you know, we've not been able to go out and recruit sponsors yet for that, for each chair. We were planning to have like 25, 30 chairs, but we're waiting on the electrical timeline to see if it was going to be completed.
Yeah, it'll be done by the end of next week, fully complete.
The electrical?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I didn't know.
All right, go get the sponsorships.
So, well.
No, I mean, and I understand, I understand exactly where you are, because when we approved the electrical upgrades, what was that, April? March. I mean, it takes time to put these events together.
Takes an inordinate amount of time. And you can't go to a sponsor and say, hey, we want you to come and sponsor a chair, we might have electrical. I mean, we've been asking all year for it to get accomplished. So it's just kind of one of those things. Now, we're kind of under the gun with other program means, you know, we've got the barbecue festival coming up, which takes a lot of time, you know, to pull together too. Plus, you're trying to raise money for other events as well ongoing. And then around October, we should start focusing on Pizza Blues and Jazz. So this is something that, you know, you do six, seven months ahead of time so that as the festival gets closer, it's just kind of putting the finishing touches on it. Well, we're kind of at that place where we don't even have a chair builder now at this point because we've had to wait. We did finally get a chair today. It is out on our grassy area by the Amphitheater. Ryan Homes has committed to help us build 30 chairs, and I hope they'll continue to do that. We're going to get them built this year regardless of where we end up with festival, we're going to at least get the chairs built this year.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Broad. Oh, Mr. Crayling?
Quick question. What approximately is it going to cost to sponsor a chair? Do we have a number?
You know, we kind of put the minimum of 2,000 on the chair, and that's not to give us the money, but we, you know, we want the chair to be a representation of something similar to the lights at Roper Mountain. A really significant design and feature that people will want to come back to multiple times to look at and enjoy and appreciate. So the minimum you're probably going to spend is a couple thousand dollars. So we put a suggested spending amount, and then to kind of move, I mean, you can spend 10,000 if you wanted to, or fix it up a chair.
So the idea is that you get a team together, they're putting it together, they're probably spending about, not actually looking necessarily for someone to sponsor somebody to do it?
We're not looking for a monetary amount, so to speak to us, but just a commitment to really do a nice, a really nice. And we've got sample ideas. We had hoped to have a sample chair ready. You know, it's just been the process of trying to get this, you know, pulled together, of getting a sample chair so that the Chamber of Commerce and our staff could decorate it for Beaching Fridays and say, this is kind of what we envision that a chair could look like. Well, you know, when you're dealing with volunteer services, you know, Ryan Homes is voluntarily building chairs, we're paying for the lumber, you kind of have to work on their timeframe too. So it's just been a little bit of a snag in here. We'll get it, one way or the other.
Thank you.
We're going to get there and it's going to turn into the premier Christmas event in the area. I know this. All right, we don't have any unfinished business, so we're going to go ahead and move on into new business, starting with the acceptance of utility tax credits. Broad, is that going to be you, or is that going to be Mr. Madden?
Either way, we can tag team together on that. I won't read through the entire report. We have received over the past few years, utility tax credit money for economic development projects of note. MP Husky, if you remember, we received utility tax credit funding to help expand water sewer out to MP Husky. So a city, a governmental agency, the county, those municipal associations are allowed to accept utility tax credit money from a utility like AT&amp;T, Duke Energy, Piedmont Natural Gas to assist in economic development projects. Duke's committed another $50,000. It's in our bank, we have it. And Piedmont Natural Gas, if you remember several months ago, they came and presented checks to council. Has also committed $50,000 to Project Access Point, which is up at Old Stage Road, that huge new complex over there where there's already 250,000 or so square foot buildings, completed another 300,000 square foot building coming out of the ground. DOT has required that they expand Old Lawrence Road, the entryway coming into Old Stage, you know, Lawrence Road right there. And so they, it's about a $400,000 project. So we've got, we assisted in getting them about $100,000 utility tax credit money. It's got to come through the city. We can't expend it until their project's done, and they have to have an economic development project in tow with them. Both of the buildings are leased out, and they expect the third 300,000 square foot building to be leased out soon. We may be talking to Commerce about some assistance as well.
Do we have a motion on the approval of the acceptance and expenditure of $100,000 in utility tax credits for the Access Point speculative manufacturing industrial buildings?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Crayling?
Is this potential, could this have any potential to impact General Electric?
If General Electric's not a utility as such, so it's only, so utility companies like Piedmont, Duke, AT&amp;T, they get a tax break and a tax credit, up to $400,000 a year that they don't have to pay taxes on. It has to go to economic development.
No economic development though would impact the renewables business there. Just want to make sure I can vote on that, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, sir, no, sir, no, sir, not at all, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. That's going to move us on to our EPA Brownfields grant.
Sure, that's, David and I worked, started three years ago, working with TerraCon Environmental Services to, it's kind of a, it really was their idea to assist the city in putting together a Brownsville study so that perhaps once that was done, it might enable and aid us in the recruitment in search of a developer for City Center. So that really was kind of the idea behind this whole concept and study. Basically, it's a study of this 24-acre tract of City Center to identify any environmental concerns, issues, challenges, mitigation plans, community involvement and input, and then, you know, maybe going back out for grant funding if there is any mitigation thing. So you can do environmental phase one, environmental phase two. And so that's really what this grant is for. We, this is the third year in a row that we've applied for it. We applied the first year, didn't get it. And I say we, TerraCon really has done the yeoman's work in this. David and I just looked pretty on the sideline assisting them in this project. We didn't get it the first year, they went after it the second year, and were told, listen, third year's the charm, and sure enough, they went out on our behalf this third year. They were awarded, the city really was awarded a $300,000 grant to assist us. There's no match other than our time and energy that we put into it. So I have to go out and RFQ to pull on a management team to help us.
What do I hear on motion for approval of $300,000 in EPA Brownfields funding and expenditure of the grant funds once a qualified management team is secured to manage the grant?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Crayling, a second from Ms. Kuzner. Is there discussion?
This goes to full council for approval.
Mr. Madden, I just want to add too, EPA has already approved the project funding, funding for the project scope of services. I mean, we're really grateful to TerraCon for the work they've done. I mean, they've made it really easy for us to get this.
Thank you, Mr. Broad. Yes, Ms. Kuzner, this goes to full council for its consideration and approval if this passes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, if this passes the committee, it goes to full council for consideration and approval.
Yes, okay.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And that's going to move us to Cultural Center renovations. Mr. Broad?
You guys approved the CIP program for Cultural Center renovations, approved us to go after SCPRT funding again and other grant funding. So we received 183,725 dollars in SCPRT funding. We also received 30,000 in grant funding from our county council members. So now you are, need to go back and approve that we accept those and then expend those funds toward the overall CIP program. In the same process, our goal and plan had been to raise enough funding to completely renovate the bathrooms, they're elementary-sized bathrooms. We do a lot of adult program, we still have children's programming too, but those bathrooms are in really tough shape. And as we begin to really change the scope of the cultural arts center, you know, it obviously makes sense to go ahead while we're doing all this work and play those bathrooms. So we would ask that you consider allowing us to have some additional funding to finish out the bathroom renovations. $90,000 all total to finish everything out that needs to be finished there. Be a $550,000 total infrastructure program, of which 470,000 or 465 is some grant funding in the CIP program.
Do we want to take this as one motion or as multiple motions?
Are you asking us, or?
What do you, because if somebody wanted to offer a motion to accept the 183,725 grant from South Carolina PRT and 300, or excuse me, 30,000 from Greenville County Council as well as the additional 90,000 plus, I mean, we could go through that, but I kind of feel like we may have some discussion, especially on the additional 90,000 for the renovations to the restrooms at the Cultural Center. And it looks like, okay, so it would be those two items. See, I want to take them separate- See, I want to take them separately?
I'll, I'll make a motion for the acceptance of the one eighty-three seven twenty-five grant from South Carolina Department of Parks and Recreation and Tourism, Twenty Twenty Undiscovered South Carolina Grant Program, and thirty thousand appropriated from Greenville County Council for Phase Two of the Cultural Center renovations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Kusner, a second from Ms. Krailing, is there discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Madden?
Yeah, Mr. Madden, if I can, the, the motion is, is to clarify, is for the expenditure of the funds as well. Yep, so accepting and expending the, the funds.
Well, we may need to do that as a third motion if we get through the second piece with the additional ninety thousand on what we would expend. All right, hearing no further discussion on the acceptance of the PRT and the county council funds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Now, is there a motion to add an amount not to exceed ninety thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars for renovations to the restrooms at the Cultural Center?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Krailing.
Just to sort of clear on this, the renovations of restrooms, this is, a lot of this has to do with being handicap accessible, meeting all the codes, is that correct? Why they so expensive?
A portion, a portion of that, I should say a good portion of that does, a lot of, a lot of the stalls over there are equipped for elementary sized kids.
Gotcha. Because that's record show that they'll be sized for Van. Okay, just want to make sure that, thank you.
Discussion from Ms. Kusner, do you have any questions? My question on this would be just from a funding source, is the money available, where will the money be coming from, and will anything be negatively impacted should we move forward with this additional ninety thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars?
So, the funding source for the additional funding will be the hospitality accommodation tax fund balance, as it is very healthy. I'll be giving council end of the year report tomorrow morning, which will detail the fiscal status of the city at fiscal year end of 2021, are there sufficient funding to cover the funding there without having any adverse impacts to any other budget for fiscal year 2022? So, what's presented is for council to approve the expenditure of the five hundred and fifty, approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's listed in the, in the agenda package.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. All right, so we will now move forward with the not to exceed for renovations at the Cultural Center, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Now, do we have a motion to spend the five hundred fifty thousand twenty-eight dollars as approved for the Cultural Center renovations?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Krailing and a second from Ms. Kusner, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion will move on to full council for its approval. That's going to bring us to our next public comment period. Anyone?
No one's indicating, Mr. Chair, that they would like to speak.
All right, so then that will take us back to committee concerns. What do I hear on adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Okay, I will call the Building Codes Committee meeting to order. It is approximately six forty-seven PM, committee members present are myself and Taff Mattney, Mr. Black is on vacation, Mr. Madden is here as well as Mr. Deerhog. So, first we have public comment, is there any public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay. What do I hear on reading and approval of the minutes from June the seventh?
For approval is presented.
All right, I'll second that, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Okay, next we have the reports from the communication, well, from Mr. Deerhog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just report that we're continuing to experience record levels of building permits and inspections in our departments, and we're moving ahead accordingly, and also we are one month into our new fiscal year, and the ideal remaining percent would be ninety-two percent right now, we've still got ninety-six percent, so we're off to a great start with our budget. I don't have anything else to report.
Great, thank you. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, our new business is an ordinance to rezone property, consisting of approximately one acre located at two-two-seven East Butler Road and providing an effective date. Mr. Deerhog?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this went to the Planning Commission last week for a public hearing, it is to rezone the one acre at two-twenty-seven East Butler Road from the R-12 Residential District to the C-2 General Commercial District. There's not any specific development plans for this corner at this time, really the, you may be familiar, this property has been for sale for quite a while, and I think the family who is selling it is just trying to take a step ahead to rezone it for their marketing purposes, and so, again, no development prospects for this track, but it does come with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve the rezoning, and staff also supports the rezoning of this property.
Thank you, okay. What do I hear on a motion to forward this to full council for approval?
Madam Chair, I'm moved for this to full council for consideration and approval, but I don't know that the, my vote will be the same once it gets to council, just.
Okay, I'll second, any discussion? Hearing none, what do I hear on approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, next we have item number B, an ordinance to rezone property consisting of approximately twelve point five acres located at Ashmore Bridge Road and Fork Shoals Road.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, so this is the out parcels at the Arden Woods Project located at the intersection of Ashmore Bridge and Fork Shoals Road, and really what they're looking to do is to reconfigure the zoning out there. We, the city, when we annexed it in, already zoned both the north, a part of the north and the south corner at that intersection for commercial, and the rest of that project was residential. What they would like, what they requested is on the north side to change that little commercial piece back to residential with the rest of the project, and that'll be an area where they'll be developing some of their amenities for that residential project. And then on the south side, to actually expand the footprint of the commercial zoning, which will better accommodate a grocery store or some similar small retail center. This also went for a public hearing before the Planning Commission last week, there was no opposition expressed to this at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this, and this also has the support of staff.
Thank you, okay. Do I hear a motion to forward this to full council for consideration and approval?
So moved.
All right, I will second that, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, ayes have it. All right, next we have a resolution to adopt the Greenville County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, the city of Malden has the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it's required to be updated every five years, and generally, the Greenville County has led this effort every cycle, and so Greenville County just adopted an update in 2020, our former fire chief, Bill Stewart, and former street supervisor, Brian Thornton, participated on that committee on behalf of the city of Malden that helped develop that plan, and now we are presenting to you that plan for adoption on behalf of the city of Malden. What this does is, it helps the city in being able to qualify for non-emergency funding that comes forth through FEMA and other federal agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Deerhog, okay. What do I hear on a motion to forward this resolution to full council for consideration and approval?
So moved.
Okay, I will second that, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, ayes have it. The next item is a discussion item, and you're going to give an update on the Planning Commission review and consideration of amendments to the city zoning ordinances relating to thrift stores.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just like you mentioned, want to update you on this, since the city council approved a resolution on July nineteenth that requests the Planning Commission to consider this item, and so this was introduced to this Planning Commission at their last, meeting last week, just as an intro, to get them thinking about it and to direct them to some resources they can start to research as they prepare for the public hearing on this item. They are anticipating having a public hearing for this at their meeting in August. So far, staff has begun researching some different areas and some regulations that they have pertaining to thrift stores and consignment stores and stores that sell used goods. In your report, you'll see there are seven communities that we've identified that have specific standards, that's been shared with the Planning Commission. At their meeting, the Planning Commission also asked staff to research Greenville County standards as well as standards from other municipalities and jurisdictions within the state of South Carolina, so we're beginning to adapt as well. But at this time, this is just presented for discussion, if there's any feedback or input you'd like to convey, certainly would be welcome to receive that right.
Thank you, do you have anything?
I like the direction that this is moving.
Thank you. All I have. Thank you, Mr. Deerhog. Okay, at this time, we'll move to public comments.
There is none at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay, any committee concerns?
No ma'am.
Hearing none, what do I hear on adjournment?
So moved.
Second, Thab, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Next up is public safety.
Okay, I will call our final committee meeting to order, public safety, August second, it is six fifty-seven PM, present is myself, Carol King, and Mr. Krailing, note that Mr. Black is out tonight on a personal matter, so Mr. Krailing and I will hold down the fort. We also have our interim police chief, Chief Miller, Chief Mccone, and Mr. Madden with us tonight. Do we have Judge Martin online?
Yes, she is here.
Judge Martin will be joining us remotely. So, I will move on to public comment. We have none live, do we have any online, okay? That'll take us to the reading and approval of the minutes from July the twelfth, committee's pleasure.
It's time to like to make a motion that the, to approve the committee meeting minutes from July the twelfth.
We have a motion to approve, I will second, second that, any discussion or corrections needed? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries. At this time, if Chief Mccone would come up for his monthly report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, let's go over our budget report, I'll let us where, where we need to be, ideally, we're ninety-two percent, and we're currently at ninety-seven percent.
It's August second.
I know.
But I'm glad you're still looking good, one month in. Perfect, anything else, Chief? All right, thank you so much. Judge Martin? We're almost there. Hold on one second, Judge, I can barely hear you.
Through the wall. You're muted, Judge.
Ms. King?
Here you are. Good evening.
Yes, ma'am, hey, good evening, so one month in too, I'm doing not quite as well as Chief Mccone, but the ideal remaining percent is ninety-three and I'm at ninety-six.
Sounds good, anything else you'd like to report out to us tonight?
No ma'am, but we'd be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Of course, any questions? Committee?
No.
All right, I think we're good, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Ninety-six percent, let's see what the police department has.
Okay.
Chief Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, our ideal remaining percentage is ninety-three percent, and we're at ninety-six right now. All right, I got a few things, the cookout at Springfield went great, our department, Public Works helped out with that also, and also, several council showed up. Tonight, we had the national night out from Holly Gardens, the fire department and police department participated at, we just made a post on Facebook, pictures of Officer Madden and some of the residents. National Night Out, I've been watching the radar, it looks like we're going to, might get a small break in that time tomorrow, so we'll be ahead and go with it. They told us that they needed to know before five o'clock if they wanted to bounce houses or not, so we told them we can't have a national night out without bounce houses, so we're going to get those in, myself and the fire chief, okay. I'd also like to thank the fire department, Public Works, Recreation Staff, and also have the science.
Okay.
That's all.
Perfect, so I'm hearing a rain or shine tomorrow night. All right, any question for Chief Miller?
The dunk tanks, is it, is it to raise money or just let, because I would have paid some money for my kids to throw, throw at y'all.
We'll take the money.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, I will take the opportunity to go on record and thank all of public safety for the last two plus months at our Beach and Friday events, it's always nice to see a heavy presence of you guys as well as all the work that Public Works does in the background, which is a lot, so I know the kids enjoyed getting their little, our hats and seeing the police cars, so that's always a positive for our community. Ah, nice. So, we have hats and badges. Okay, moving on, we have no unfinished business, so we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. The first order would be inmate labor agreement that you can find in your pocket on page five, so I will just briefly say that this is a contract to renew our inmate labor as it's now, post-COVID has come back available to the city. There has been some conversation to do away with the inmate labor. This contract would not bind us, it would just give us the ability to have that available if needed, if I'm understanding correctly, so if there's any particular questions for Mr. Madden, I will let him have the floor. Yes, sir, Mr. Krailing?
Just real quick, so this is just the agreement with the, with the, for the inmate labor. It
labor, the discussion as far as whether we want to use them moving forward or what for, that would go to Public Works Committee, correct?
Yes, uh the staff is still putting together some of the data that was requested, and uh they'll be presented at the Public Works Committee next month.
All right, thank you.
So what is committee's pleasure, if there's no other questions at this time?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to um forward the inmate labor agreement to full council.
Thank you, Mr. Krailing, um I will second that motion, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. Just one, one point, when it gets there, um I've got a lot of feedback from some of the citizens, and uh also from our previous discussions, um I would like more feedback if I can, uh before we go and start bringing them, bringing inmates back to Malden, I just maybe want to make that statement, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, um all those in favor of forwarding the inmate labor agreement to council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries. That brings us to our next item, which would be the CMAR fire station, um agreement on page um 13 of your packet. Chief, did you or um Mr. Madden want to?
I'll do it, Ms. King.
Okay, thank you.
Uh so the city currently has an architect for the new fire station, Stuart Cooper Newell, um and so city went out for bid for a construction manager to actually build the station, because Stuart Cooper Newell is designing the station, and received a number of bids, they were interviewed by evaluation committee, which included department directors that'll be involved or with the, with the fires, the new fire station slash police substation, along with Stuart Cooper Newell. Uh the, the initial set of bids were part down to two, they were interviewed and recommended C Mar for this project is cloverleaf construction.
Does committee have any questions for Mr. Madden, can um in relation to the bid? So what we're looking at would be to um forward to council the, awarding the bid to construction manager, let's see, the C M A R, yes, construction manager at risk.
You said clover, you threw me off there.
Yeah, cloverleaf construction is, is the name of the fire.
All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to forward the contract, uh construct for approved, I'm sorry, to approve the construction firm to serve as a construction manager at risk, C Mar, to provide pre-construction and construction management services to the new fire station headquarters and police department substation in Malden.
Thank you, uh Mr. Krailing, so we have a, a motion to forward to full council, the, to award the contract to cloverleaf construction, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, none opposed, motion carries to full council. That takes us back to public comment. We have none in council chambers?
No.
And none um remotely. Do we have any committee concerns tonight?
It's time.
Hearing none, that brings us to adjournment. What do I have on adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I'll second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.